Presidential customers in total about 70,000 customers across the area. We don't have recycling that's available to all. We only offer recycling to municipalities that we have exclusive contracts with and HOAs that we have exclusive contracts with. The recycling day here, and I'm gonna kind of wing with you here, so we're gonna get through this part kind of quick. Recycling is on Mondays here. We always encourage people, use your 64 gallon cart, but put your cart out the night prior. All your recyclables should be loose. Do not put it in plastic bags because the recycling plant does not take the bags. We do not set the guidelines of what is acceptable or not acceptable. That is not us. Our job is we collect it and we transport it to the disposal site, which is at CW Cycling in Harahan. There's also another facility, Republic in Baton Rouge, but they charge almost double. So that's why we choose to go there. And I'm gonna hit on a recycling plant a little bit later, okay? Again, on the website, you'll find items that are recyclable, that are accepted, and you'll find ones that are not. It's on the page on our, on our website. Actually, when we get to it, you're gonna see on our website, under municipalities, the town of Abida Springs is there, and you can click on there and get all the information that you're gonna need. You can, it will list out as far as what's acceptable. Again, don't make the rules. Plastics one, plastics two, newspapers, plastic bags are not. And it's key because what happens if you put stuff in plastic bags and it gets to the plant in plastic bags, or if there's really garbage that's in there, which we call residual waste, if it gets to be too much, they can charge us back on that. They will charge us. So they do not want the plastic bags at all. They want everything loose. The unacceptable items, I know glass has been a big thing. Again, this is not our rules. This is their rules. We have to go by what they will accept and won't accept. I think here in Abida that y'all really kind of led somewhat in the parish with getting lemon tree, I believe, and I think I've seen other municipalities follow suit from what I've seen. I think they've got, gotten lemon tree, and I think City of Slidell just started about a month and a half ago doing a program where you can drop off glass. Lemon tree is part of that, and then it goes to a facility in Shawmet. Glass half full, I think is what it is. Something like that. So they started with that. It, I think it started off with a bang, but I think that has started to go down. I will tell you that recycling across the southeast, it's not unique to Louisiana, across the southeast continues, the participation rate continues to go down. The northeast, the west, and a little bit of the east, it's recycling is a little bit greater. But the participation rates across the southeast are nothing compared with that. I would say in Abida Springs, I don't think we've collected in about a year, but I, I think we're probably around 30 to 35% participation in Abida Springs. Mandeville's probably a little bit about 40, and Covington's between 40, 45. When you go to the east side of the parish, it's 18%. In Diamond Head, Mississippi, Waveland, and Bay St. Louis, they eliminated recycling a year ago. They got rid of it. Jefferson Parish eliminated recycling a year ago. I think they're trying to get it cranked up again with Romelli on a subscription service, I believe. So recycling, look, I, I get it, we get it, but if you just don't have enough people participating, and the thing has always been, you get the, the ones that want recycling and some people don't, and they say, I don't want to pay for it, you know, included with it. So it does become an issue. On, again, I'm not gonna get into everything here, just to tell you plastics number one and number two is basically all that's accepted by the recycling plant, and that's with many recycling plants. So number one's probably, you know, your, your water bottles, Coke bottles, things like that. Your number two's when you get into the detergents, milk jugs, things like that. Little yogurt containers and things like that are not accepted. So again, we do have a listing, it's on the website, you know, that you can go and, and look at what is accepted, what is not accepted. So what happens with the recyclables? Because this is the big, the big question from a lot of people. Everybody swears that we dumped recyclables with garbage. We do not. Yes, the same trucks are used that we, the equipment, the assets, but we separated the days so that they would not get mixed up. We did that years ago where we took and separated days throughout the parish, so we made recycling day separate from what garbage day would be in the areas. Here in Abida, it's on a Monday. Mandeville's on Tuesday. The east side is on Wednesday, and some HOAs over here, and then City of Covington is on Thursday for recycling. So we do not take and dump everything in the garbage. However, you have two different carts. You have a 95 gallon cart, you got a 64 gallon cart. Your 64 gallon cart is actually your recyclable cart. Here's the problem. Some people use a 64 gallon cart as their extra garbage cart because they don't recycle. So it really gets hard if somebody's got a 64 gallon cart and a 95 gallon cart that's out at the curb on a Monday for recycling. And we've said, if you have whatever carts there on recycling day, let's go on with recycling. If you have your recycling cart out on garbage day because people use it for garbage, it's gonna get dumped with garbage. So we encourage on recycling day, if you're a recycler, once we dump your recycling, please remove your recycling cart away from the curb, get it away from the curb. And we've got that information on our website as well. Anybody have any questions about that so far? The recyclables, once we collect it, where do they go? What happens to it? Our transfer station is in La Combe, which means the transfer station, we back up, the trucks back up, we have 18 wheelers, right, trailers, 100 foot trailers, and we dump everything into those trailers. We have two recyclable trailers that we use. They're walking floor trailers. And all the recyclables for that week are collected into that. Once they're loaded up, they get brought to CW Recycling. Once they get to CW Recycling, we unload them. We don't have anything to do past that. We do not do any sorting or anything. That is all with the processing plant, which we do not own, not affiliated with, or anything. We simply collect recyclables and bring it to the processing plant for them to do with the sorting, and then they sell it to markets. Any questions? So late September, early October last year, a city council people from Slidell had asked me, could they go tour the facility? And I was like, ooh, I don't know. I've, I've never asked that question. And so we reached out to CW Recycling and told them there was a municipality that we service, would it be possible where they could have a couple of people go take a tour? I've never toured the facility. I've toured a different recycling facility, but I haven't toured this one. So it was arranged, and this council person here, Councilman Nick DeSanti, he's with City of Slidell. In fact, he's gonna be chairman of the council starting today. And I saw him last week. And this is actually from October 5th. He gave a, he posted this on his Facebook page, that he went and toured the facility. And if you don't mind, I'll read a little bit of it. This week, I took a tour of the recycling facility that Coastal Waste Management uses to process all the items they pick up from Slidell residents. It was amazing to see how all of the items are sorted for processing. Here's a few rules to follow when recycling. Do not put your plastic bags in your recycling bin. Bring them to stores like Walmart or Winn-Dixie and place in their plastic bag recycling cans. I don't know if Winn-Dixie's still around, but. Only place number one and number two plastics in your recycling bin. You can check the number by looking at the bottom of the container at the number listed in the recycling triangle. No glass is recycled through Coastal, but you can keep an eye out for city events coming up that will provide glass recycling opportunities, which I told you they went to. I think what y'all do here maybe is once, how often is lemon tree, I think? I see it on Facebook and I share it when I see it. I believe I know, I believe I know that lady right there.
Sandra.
I haven't seen Sandra's life in a very long time.
Hey, how often do we do lemon tree? Is it quarterly or?
Twice a, twice a year? Any type of paper can be put in your recycling bin. Any type of metal food or beverage cans can be put in your recycling bin. If you do not currently recycle, please consider doing so. Recycling is making a real difference in reducing waste and conserving resources. Since we pay for this service, let's take full advantage of it. Now, that's something that, that council person took the tour and decided to post. These are the pictures that he took. These are not my pictures. These are his pictures that he took. There's several slides, I think I have 11 different pictures. And that's of CW Recycling's plant. And this is what he posted and showed what goes there. And I think you got one more after that. So, if you could, so what happens with your recyclables? They are recycled. We do take them to a recycling facility. They are not dumped with the garbage. Okay? And so if you see a truck and you say, well, that picks up my garbage, it does. Those same assets are used, but it goes, well, on recycle day, those recyclables go into a trailer at our facility in La Combe, and we transport to them. They will tell us, and I, and I, the facility in Baton Rouge will actually take pictures of all the garbage. They'll give you a percentage with the bill, showing you all the garbage that may be. I will tell you, CW Recycling has been a lot more lenient than what Baton Rouge has been. They have taken it out, the garbage out, but they have not charged us the extra. And I will tell you, residual waste, I'll give you a kind of an idea. In 2019, early 2019, we were probably sending, don't quote me on this, I want to say maybe 250 tons a month to a plant in Hattiesburg, FV Recycling. And they did composite studies for us. And in the composite studies, we found out that almost 35 to 40% was residual waste, garbage. So we really went on an educational campaign. That was Zach Streef with the Saints. He used to be a Saints football player, and we did that video. It was a 17 minute video, but I know people didn't want to watch it, but it was very educational. And we did that for a reason. And we brought the numbers down and got our residual waste numbers down to almost 16, 17%, which is really below United States average, which is around 23 to 25. China's 5%. But we have tried our best to educate people. I think you've seen when we started cart content only here, we put out an infomercial with different things. We've tried to put content on our website that people will find very valuable. And I've always asked, if people don't see something or need something, and you're gonna see my email address, if you have suggestions, I'm all open, open to if we need to add some stuff that you feel will be beneficial, we'll put it on there. I do a lot of the posts for our Facebook page. The, the video things that go on, I get the videography and we, and we put, you know, messages together. So again, I'm welcome to ideas or anything that y'all feel will be beneficial to the residents here in, in town of Abida. So this is the actual Abida Springs page on our website, and I want to just show you this. We try to make it as user friendly as possible. It's got different things that you'll find on the page. A customer care section, which I'll go over, a bulk pickup schedule. I'm not gonna cover the pay my bill at dumpster rentals because this really pertains, you know, subscription customers on that. But we do have commercial dumpsters, and we have roll-off dumpsters that are available. So the customer contact, the contact customer care. So if you have a missed pickup, you can go onto that page and fill out a form if you want. You can call the office and, if there's a missed pickup. If you need to request a cart, a swap for a cart, your cart's cracked, the lid's cracked, you need to replace them or anything like that, you can fill out a form on the website. Just to let you know, I'll give you a heads up, I'm copied on all these. So I see everyone that comes through for our organization, no matter where you're from. If it's a service issue or a question, again, I'm not gonna cover these two. There's forms for you to fill out. So you can do two. You can fill out the form and you can call customer service. Customer service ladies are there from eight to four, Monday through Friday. I'm not gonna go through all this, other than to tell you this flyer, cut it off a little bit, but this is on our website, but this went out in the water bills when we started the cart content only service. So this went to every resident along with the water bills, but it's on the website too, in case people need to refer back to it, it's there. The thing I will tell you, garbage or recycling, we encourage, and bulky green waste, put it out the night before. You're recycling, put it out on Sunday night. Don't wait, you know, till the next morning. Comes early, and we never know because there may be where we run this, we might run the route, a different driver. The original, the, the regular driver calls in sick, we run a different driver. He may run it a different way. So just, we try to tell people, just, you know, please put it out the night before, and that way you'll, you should be safe. Bulk pickup schedule for town of Abida, we pick, we start on the third Monday of every month. But we encourage everybody, again, your green waste and your bulky waste, put it out on Sunday night. We have that week to get it done and get it picked up. Because again, I can't guarantee you that on Monday morning, we might have three drivers that call in. And the first place we pull from is we gotta pull boom drivers because we gotta get the garbage up. So we may not be able to start on Monday, we might start it on Tuesday. What I can tell you is that we start at South Wind subdivision, when we start sweeping, and we sweep the area. But that's a starting point. And when we sweep, we go from there, the driver will start from there. It might take us two or three days before we get it all picked up, but we do not go back. You heard me earlier about forms on the website and filling out a form or calling in if you have a pile, that is a safety guard. You don't have to do it, but I encourage people to do it that way because the driver's going to get those forms, the ones that have been submitted or called in, the tickets that have been put in. So when he's, he's sweeping that area, he can check and make sure that he did get that ticket. But we do, once we sweep and we get past this street or that street, we're going that way and we're not coming back. Any questions with that? He'll tell you, have your bulky waste to the curb on Sunday night before the third Monday of the month? Place your bulky waste at least three feet away from mailbox, vehicle, fence, cable, box, cable box, post, et cetera. Please do not put bulky waste to your green waste under low hanging trees or power lines. Try and get as much of your bag waste in the cart. We can get it, but try and get as much of your bag waste into the carts as possible. The biggest problems we have in a lot of areas is that people will put stuff right close to the mailbox, and I don't know if you have seen our boom trucks, the claw trucks, and when that opens up, how big that, and the same thing with our, our garbage trucks, the arms on it. That's why we always ask people to keep it three feet away from there because we don't want to damage the mailboxes. We don't want to damage anything. The wires, lot of low wires in a lot of places, across St. Tammany, South Shore, wherever you go. Again, it's a problem if that pile is directly underneath a wire, or if the cart's directly underneath a wire. So that's why, I know people say about the rules, the rules are so tight. There's reasons why we have that in place. So we just ask people not to. That you may find where a driver on a garbage day or recycling day, or with your green waste pile, that they'll leave an orange tag. Hate to use those, but it's more of, hey, we try and say, use it a couple of times. If it still persists, then we'll leave it down, and we'll have customer service contact customer and say, please, this is why it's being left down. This is a calendar that's on the website, and if you see, it's got bulky waste pickup. It is set for the remainder of this year, probably going into next year. That'll have that, and you'll see exactly when we're gonna start, which Monday we plan on starting, which week we're gonna be in for bulky waste. That information's on the website. And this is dangerous, but there is my email address, there is my cell phone number, and I don't mind at all. I'm one that people post stuff on Nextdoor Neighbor app, or they post on Facebook, and they post on group pages, and there's complaints, I go and say, what's the problem? I want to fix it. If it's legit, I promise you, I'm gonna fix it. If it's people that just have chronic complaining, I can't fix that. But I don't mind reaching out to me if you have suggestions. If you're not sure about something, if you have questions, feel free to email me or call me. I'm here to help. This is a partnership. We've had a great partnership, I feel. And are we perfect? We are not perfect. We're all human. I feel we have the best team of drivers, helpers, mechanics, customer service ladies. We are so very blessed and fortunate for all the people that we have, and they have the right intentions, and they do a doggone good job, and I would not want to be working in the heat that they work in every day at all. I can promise you, I see them when they come in in the afternoons and dripping sweat. Yes, is air conditioning those trucks? Go sit by that engine cab with the air conditioning going, and you're still gonna be sweating. Unbelievable. They appreciate when people are out there handing them water. The guys on the back of the truck, I would never, you know, we still have that because there's what we call back down routes. So when you see a rear loader, traditional garbage truck, they're basically doing back downs where side loader trucks can't get to. So we have, we call them hoppers, that were temps, and we gave them an opportunity to join the company, and we hired them full-time company. So we have 10 company hoppers, and they do a doggone good job, and I'm good for two carts, I tell them. When they work a route, they may have 700 carts on a route. I cannot do what they do. They have to condition their bodies for that. So I have a lot of respect for what they do and what everybody does with our facility. So I know I may be biased. I know sometimes we're not perfect, and I know sometimes people hate the garbage man, but I will tell you, we're blessed, their intentions are great, they take a lot of pride in what they do, and trust me, they want to satisfy you. They want to say, I appreciate you saying that. Thank you so much. So on behalf of our team at Coastal, you know, I'd like to thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. We appreciate your business. We do not take it for granted, and we consider ourselves a premier provider across the entire southeast. As far as us, we're not going anywhere. This will be our seven year anniversary, September 1st. We will go after other business that makes sense. So again, we're not gonna do something that's gonna jeopardize, we're not looking to get big to where our services will slip in other areas. That's not our plan at all. Our plan is to make sure we keep providing premium service in every area that we serve and to all the residents that we serve. So I'll start, City of Bugalooza, City of Covington, town of Abida Springs, City of Mandeville, City of Slidell. I'm just giving the municipal contracts here. We have contracts with St. Tammany Parish on both sides, east side and west side. Many exclusive HOAs, long lists there to give. City of Bay St. Louis, City of Waveland, City of Diamond Head, all of Hancock County, which is 20,000 residents total there. If you take City of Mandeville, it's close to 5,000 residents. City of Covington, close to 5,000 residents here, it's about 1297, I think, somewhere in that. I might have missed one or two. City of Bugalooza is roughly 4,500 to 5,000 customers in there, but then we have a lot of subscription customers too, in the exclusive HOAs, and we have probably 2,500 commercial customers as well. So, yes ma'am. Any other questions?
I would just like to say that we have a wonderful partnership with Coastal, that a lot of people give Keep Abida Beautiful a lot of kudos, but I will tell you that part of this is that we have garbage recycling and bulk pickup. It would not, our job would be 10 times harder if we did not have that comprehensive garbage pickup service, that people that are outside of the municipality are so jealous of what we have, and that, you know, all I will say is that spread out just a, get some more, get some more of these subdivisions that aren't exclusive, because they need bulk pickups so badly that if we want to, if we want to have less litter, bulk pickup, you know, that they, they can't afford $65 for a load to the dump, that what you do is invaluable, and we have a great relationship. Your drivers are the best.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
They help us tremendously, so.
Thank you, I appreciate all those comments, and we look at that as a partnership. And I, again, what happens here in, in Keep Abida Beautiful, we take that to heart because that's a reflection on us too. So in any area that we service, so we take that to heart, and we know the work and, and efforts that are put in by municipalities and, and, you know, the town, everybody works for the town and the residents. Y'all take a lot of pride, and that's important, so we have to take the pride too. We all, we know the customers' expectations are here, and I can tell you, we have meetings on Thursday mornings at 4:00 AM, and I probably go to two a month, and I always tell people, we want to exceed the expectations. I don't want to meet them, I want to exceed them, and they do too. They do too. And so, I, I appreciate that, and I'm gonna carry that back to them too, this Thursday. I will, I will absolutely do that because they need to hear that. They, they get beat up a lot, so it'd be great for me to carry that back, so thank you. And we've been knowing each other a long time. I'll, I'll pay you later on that comment.
We might do a public show about these services.
You might.
If we do, you can use it, you know, that, but absolutely, we've got to find a way to get people, more people to recycle, more people to use the bulk pickup. Put it out on the third week, not the first week of the month, because we don't want to look at it for two weeks, you know.
Yeah, and I just want people, and if you can get the message out, I think the key thing is, make sure you put it out on Sunday night, or the night, the week we're gonna be in there, and that people understand, once we pass an area, if you put it out after we pass the area, guess, guess how many weeks it's gonna sit? Almost a month. And that's, but if we can get that message out to everybody so that they fully understand, please have it out there. And look, I will tell you, if we miss something, because we're human, whether it's garbage or whether it's a bulky pile or whatever, I want to know about it, you know? You can, you can contact me directly. You don't have to go through the city and file a complaint or whatever. Come to me directly. I'm gonna fix it, I promise you.
I think your service is fine right now, but looking towards the future, I was wondering if your company does spend a little time looking towards the future and things like seeing if there's anywhere that we'll take some of the things that we don't take in the current month, or seeing.
Are you referring to recycling?
Especially glass.
Mm-hmm.
There must be places that didn't take glass.
So they are, like glass half full, but that's all they take is glass. So we're not a sorting company. All we do is we collect, and then we transport it to a, a plant, and they do the sorting there. If glass half full was a full recycling, you know, that would work out good because they take glass. We're always exploring and seeing if there's any plans that, but I will tell you, everyone that I've seen across the south, and it, it would be way too costly to try and bring something way to Florida. You know, there may be some people that would be willing to go up a lot on the rate, but there'd be a lot that say, I don't recycle and I don't want to pay that. So any, the area here, the region in here, we've explored with that. And like I told you, the one in Baton Rouge, what they charge is double the price of what we pay locally.
We do.
Oh, we do.
And the other question, I've been, certainly looking at.
We have. The Waste Expo was here a year and a half ago, two years ago, and they had a couple of electric trucks there. They're so new to the market though, that they need to, and, and they can't even supply what, what we would need right now, as far as with that. It's so new that I will tell you that many companies are waiting, letting other people kind of be so-called a guinea pig, because the price of them is around $700,000 a truck. That's a, that's about $250,000 more than what we pay for the same truck today. So I, we are, we're not gonna, and that is kind of future, and I want you to keep in mind too, that the automated trucks that we brought, we were really the first to bring them to this market in this area. We were the first ones to go out and see the technology. Now, this has become a norm kind of across south, north of everything of having the ASL, we call them ASL trucks, automated trucks, automated, automated side loader. And it happened for probably, it, it went quicker because of COVID. When COVID hit, the workforce, not only in our industry, I think y'all have gone to restaurants before, right? And how many restaurants had to close because they can't find labor? How many businesses couldn't find labor, waving their hands just wanting to get people to come to work, and you couldn't find anybody? It happened with us too. The helpers on the back of our truck that cooled, and even with drivers, it's like, started to vanish, and it was hard to replenish with that. So, and I'll do this real quick, I know that y'all have other stuff to, to talk about. The helpers on the back of the truck were temp workers. We work with a temp company, people ready. Back in 2020 and prior to that, we would need almost 30 helpers a day. I can tell you, I would stand out there in the mornings and we would be 12 to 14 people short. So what does that mean when you're 12 to 14 people short and you can't stay after trucks? What happens? The trucks sit. Can't do anything. Garbage sits. So when it happened, the automated trucks kind of accelerated of having to get the automatic trucks because you have a driver and you have that arm that shows up every day. And it has worked very well, and we still retain 10 hoppers that are working on the back of trucks, and then we took two more and hired them full-time at our facility to help out the facility, and we're giving them a pathway to grow. A lot of the drivers you see today, many of them, they started out on the back of a truck and have worked their way to become, get their license and CDL, and it's great stories, wonderful stories. One of them's 72 years old, Mr. Benny, we all love him, and he trains drivers, by the way. He's still part-time with us, and he helps train drivers. He's still part-time with us and he helps train drivers, entire training program. So that's why you saw the automated. And we kind of brought it to the market and went out and said, we need to do something. You may have saw some things on the South Shore where, man, they needed ninety to ninety-five hoppers a day. They would have thirty people not show up. So, and that's, and I'm just talking about our industry and it's not unique to this area either. That's across, everywhere across the south. I mean, it happened everywhere. So COVID changed a lot of things for a lot of people and a lot of businesses. But we're very fortunate and blessed. I'm not complaining. We're glad where we are. We love the people that we have working for us, love them like family. We are a family. We do a lot of things for our people. We do cookouts. We get food trucks for them. I just lined up a snowball truck. We, you know, we, it's a unique thing when you're locally owned and operated that you can do those kind of things and make yourself different from corporations. I worked in the corporate world. There's pros and cons, but I will tell you, having a locally owned business to where you can reach, you can see me, I'm here, I'm all, I live in Slidell, been on the North Shore, I'm not going anywhere, right? And I'm giving you my phone number, which is crazy, but I'm giving you my phone number, my email address to where you have direct contact to me. That's unheard of really. It is, but that's how I feel. I'm, I'm big on customer service and I always want us to always meet your expectations and exceed your expectations. It's important to us. Any other questions? Y'all give me a mic, I might go all night, so that's dangerous.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks, buddy. Appreciate you. All right. Uh, let's see, go on to roll call.
Mayor's announcements.
That was, that was, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I got another sheet, my bad. We have some other mail, mayor announcements. Fourth of July celebration is this Friday. Come out to the park, the Trailhead Park, starts at five, ends at nine-ish, kind of whenever the fireworks go off. We'll have vendors, food trucks, drinks for sale, live music, and the fireworks show. Something that we, we need to recognize, with some community recognition, we're proud to announce that the Abita Springs Art and Farmers Market won gold in the Best of St. Tammany 2025 Awards based on community nominations and votes. Thanks y'all, thank y'all. Two ladies that do it are Taylor and Angie, so kudos out to them. Also, the Trailhead Museum took a bronze, so that was great too. We have a playground project, I guess I'm a, yeah. We have a playground project that we're starting to work on, again, to move the playground out of the, the flood plain, try and get it in a place where it's not, and then kind of redo, you know, kind of make it a little newer. And we're going to be doing fundraisers and, and putting together a fundraiser committee and, and, and that kind of stuff. So if you're interested in that, Alderman Patterson is going to be the one that's going to be handling it from the board, but that doesn't mean anybody else can't get on it as well. So that, that's an important thing too for, for our kids in the local area. The Live Oak Journal is, there's a call for stories. So, you know, as we get, the, the journals coming out in September and we're always looking for new stories and historical photos, so if you have any, get with our event staff, which is Taylor and Angie, or you can see Kristen as well, either, either or of them. St. Tammany, is this it? Yes, the St. Tammany Parish former recognized the conservancy, so I have a copy of it here. I don't know if y'all have that or saw it. It's a good story in here. It shows the sign and, and some good pictures. Martha's in there, Martha Gruning's in there. So it's a good, really good article. Get one. We had a bunch of them at the town hall. I don't know where they went, but they're somewhere. All right. So that is all my announcements. So now we'll do roll call.
We'll do roll call. Alderman Patterson is not here, so we'll start with Alderman Budra. Alderman Contois. Alderman Salsi. Alderman Templi.
Okay. Call for any agenda modifications? Hearing none, we'll move forward from there. Except the June third, twenty twenty-five Town Council Meeting minutes. Have a first. And a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. April twenty twenty-five, wait, is that where we are? Yeah, April twenty twenty-five financials. Just kind of him.
Yes, good, good afternoon. These are the financial statements for the four months ending April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So we're at thirty-three percent of the budget should be completed at this point in time. So let's start with the general fund. On the revenue side, on lines three and four are your sales tax, so that's trending on point at thirty-four percent. On line five is your franchise tax. It is a little behind the thirty-three percent, but anticipate that will catch up. Your alcohol permit fees, that is on line seven, that, you haven't collected anything, but that's more of an August renewal, so that will come later on in the year.
Do you know when that's due?
August. August.
August, okay.
Your building permit fees on line twelve and the inspection fees that is on line fourteen, those two are somewhat lagging behind, but I think that's just a factor of any kind of buildings that's going, building that's going on in the town. On line twenty, I know we've talked about this for a couple of months, your citation fines and fees, it is lagging behind. It's only at seventeen percent. I do think that's going to be, end up being a budget amendment. I think the, you know, the, the amount of citations anticipated on a monthly basis was a little bit higher than what's actually coming in. So you'll see that as a budget amendment. I think that more of a, the fifty-ish thousand is going to be more the accurate monies coming in for that. On line twenty-four is your garage sale income. That is complete. So the total amount of funds that came in were thirty-seven, twenty-five. Yes. Yes. That is correct. That is correct. So overall, your operating revenues that is on line thirty is five hundred and eighty-nine thousand or forty-one percent of budget. On the expenditure side, line forty-one, your total public safety salaries and benefits as a whole.
If we back out Avalorn, what's our percentage? Or if we were to calculate Avalorn over twelve months versus getting ninety-six percent within the first, really, two months?
So you wanted to back out the Avalorn from the actual in the budget?
Or we took an average of it, monthly versus annually? You know, because the bulk of it has come in.
Correct.
So the forty-one percent obviously includes a hundred percent of the Avalorn.
That is correct. That is correct. But it also includes like ninety-one percent of your occupational license that's on line eight. You also have like your historic application fees on line eleven, that's at a hundred and fourteen percent.
Five hundred dollars though.
You do have some of your budget amounts that you do get the actual at the beginnings of the year. You also have like the August inspection fees on line seventeen at a hundred and one, on line sixteen, the rental fees at ninety-two. So some of them are in the beginning of the month that you do receive. You, you all have some that are, that are, are less, like for your town on line twenty-two, your town hall, your town hall rental income is only at four percent. But you get a lot of that more in the spring and the summer than you do get right now.
Okay.
I've got a question on thirty-three. Do you have a, a updated total on that one, on line thirty-three?
On the grant income for Louisiana Outdoor Forever?
Yeah, what's the total of that expenditure on that grant?
The expenditure?
Those are the only expenses so far this year. Those sixteen.
So it's a cost reimbursement?
That's a, that's a rep, that's a.
Yeah. Okay.
There's been no additional expenses this year. They've just started the construction on the ADA. And so you'll start to see those roll around again, starting in June and July.
All right. And we didn't have anything on the trace light granting?
That happened in May and June.
Okay.
So you'll see the next, as these next financials come in, you're going to start to see those grants start to catch up because most of those started closing out after the first quarter.
Yeah, I just, I knew that man had complained about his lighting, so.
Yeah, the project's complete and we have received, we've submitted and received a large amount of this six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. There's a small amount still left as we close out that project and, and kept the retainage portion of it.
Okay. Okay.
Then on the expenditure side, on the next page, on line forty-one is your total public safety salaries and benefits, which is at, a target at thirty-two percent. Nothing really, you know, significant here that we haven't maybe talked about in prior months. The, just to point out, I think we had talked about this at last month, the line fifty-two, the Marshall Computer Networking, that's that software that you're now having to pay for that you hadn't, have not had to in the past, and so that will be a budget amendment. But overall, your top, your total public safety and other expenditures of fifteen thousand nine as of April is about twenty-eight percent of your budget. Your clerk of court expenditures, the salaries are right around thirty percent. And your expenditures are just four hundred and fifty. So you've only spent about thirteen percent of your budget for the clerk of court, other expenditures. On your general government expenditures, on line seventy, salaries and benefits are at thirty-three percent, so right on target. Your other government expenses on line eighty-one of twenty-three thousand eight ninety-nine or just about twenty-four thousand is about sixteen percent of budget. So nothing unusual there. The next section, just to point out to you guys, on line eighty-four, that's at ninety-two percent, that's at Tyler Tech, software that was paid in March.
Okay.
So is that thirteen, seven thirty-eight, a hundred percent?
You may have a couple of the little, small software, but that's most of it.
So the fifteen thousand dollar budget's sufficient?
Yes. Also to point out, on line ninety-six, we talked about the income for the Pushmore Parade, here's all the hundred percent of the expenses. So you hit total expenses of about eleven hundred dollars and the income was about thirty-five hundred for that. So you did come out ahead on that event. Also on line one oh two, just to point out to you guys, since that's a large budget item of eighty-five thousand, some of those expenditures are expected to come in, in May, in May. So total government other expenses as of April is eighty-four, four or twenty-six percent of your budget. And then under your grants, you'll notice on line one sixteen and one seventeen, you're at seventy-nine and seventy-eight percent. These are going to be closed out as of June. So most of those expenditures have been incurred. So overall, on line one twenty-four is your total general government expenditures of four hundred and six thousand or twenty-one percent of budget. Any questions on that?
One twenty-seven?
One twenty-seven is a capital outlay.
That was not budgeted?
That was this, this room right here.
Okay.
From the Ida expenses.
Is that possible to get a little more detail on those capital outlays and, and, you know, what were they? Like one twenty-eight, was that the car?
That's the computers.
Oh, it's a computer.
Yeah.
The laptops for the officers.
Okay.
Any other questions on general fund?
This net transfer is in and out. You got to add a couple together to get that, don't you? I think I added a couple together to find that, at two-ten.
Right, so the two hundred was trans, because they go into different funds. So that's why they're listed separately.
Right. Okay.
Your utility fund.
When's that cemetery fund transfer being done?
That due from, or due to?
Monthly. We do it, I think it's like forty, two fifty a month that we transfer from the general fund into the cemetery fund. And we put it in the budget, but I think that you guys, it's not recorded in.
Right, it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to show up on your budget to actual.
Where's it going to show up then?
On your balance sheet.
Okay. So it's being done monthly?
Yes.
Started in May?
I think it started in.
Earlier than that.
April, May, March or April.
Well, it couldn't have been before the budget was approved because it wasn't in last year's budget.
But it was.
It's not a budget item.
No, because it's not.
It wasn't in the twenty twenty-four budget, is what I'm saying. Okay, we'll figure it out.
Utility fund. So starting off with the gas, gas revenues, so your total gas revenues through April are three hundred and forty-eight or fifty-three percent, it's on line seven, of your budget. One thing that kind of jumped out was the gas line extension fees. That's at a hundred and three percent. So that's something that, you know, there's a estimate of the budget, but then sometimes actual comes out to be more. So you, you're in a better position that when your revenues are greater than your expenses. And as I think we've seen in the past, those gas sales are, you know, are higher than in the earlier months. So those, those will kind of level out. And as we've seen also in the past, on line five, your gas late fees, the late fees for all of these hadn't been charged in the previous years. So the, those are budget line items that, where your late fees are greater than what was budgeted. And that's going to be across the board for gas, water, sewer, garbage. On your water revenue, which is on line sixteen, total revenues are a hundred and thirty-eight thousand or twenty-seven percent. I think we have talked about this where water is, water and sewer are lagging behind than what was budgeted because of the rates weren't taken into consideration, or they were taken into consideration. And so they were, they're not going to be collected until May because the rates didn't go into effect until April. Those, those new rates are effective for the usage in April, that's not collected till May.
I thought it was just people using less water or something. Nope, okay.
But on line twelve, you notice the late fees are higher at sixty-six percent.
Oh yeah, sure do.
So similar to water or sewer, on line twenty-three, it's at twenty-five percent. And similar to water, your late fees are greater at sixty-five, sixty-three percent. On your garbage, that's on line twenty-nine, total revenues are a hundred and forty-two percent or at thirty-three percent. So you're pretty much on target for garbage revenues. Your other revenues on line thirty-four is fifty-three thousand or thirty-one percent. So your total operating revenues on line thirty-five are eight hundred and eighty-three thousand or thirty-four percent. And then when we go over the expenditures, we'll kind of look back at the revenues just to kind of see how each department is, is doing. So on your expenditure side, just your general utility operating expenses are listed first and that total amount is on line fifty-eight at ninety-eight thousand. So you're about thirty-nine percent. And I think what's kind of kicking that. And I think what's kinda kicking that above, that, that thirty-three percent, is on line fifty-one, the software subscription expense, and that's the Tyler Tech expense.
Janet or, uh...
I thought that was a one-time fee?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
It's a yearly renewal of like forty-five thousand dollars, and so it's split, um, between the three funds.
Okay.
Then on your gas section, so your gas salaries and related benefits on, we don't have a line, right below sixty-two, is at thirty-two percent. And then you have gas operating expenses, which is just below line sixty-six, at two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. Your natural gas purchases on line sixty-four is greater than that thirty-three percent, but that's anticipated. Because it's, it's front-end loaded, so you're gonna, yeah.
And the gas reports and training Kristen is putting together for us, we had several different, um, required reports, compliance reports that happened in this year, there's gonna be more expenses that are coming, we're gonna have to do a budget amendment. Kristen is putting together, um, with the help of, of Pipeline Integrity, what those reports are gonna be, so that when we do the amendment, and then how often those happen, so that we'll know. Because one year you might only have two of them, the next year you might have five of them, and then, um, there was some, um, that, there were a couple that they had to do three in one year this year. And so, um, it's going to be significantly higher than what we budgeted, but we budgeted based on last year. So they've added some reports and some compliance, things that needed to be done. So when we do the budget amendment, Kristen's gonna have an actual worksheet for you guys to let you know, what did we pay last year, what did we pay this year, what can we expect to pay next year.
Are y'all looking at where we're gonna get the money for the amendments? We're gonna need some more money from somewhere.
Michelle or Janet? In the general fund, the utility fund, the public works, we have the, uh, account and auditing expense, thirty-one thousand, forty thousand, eight-hundred, thirty-one thousand, and we're trending good for the year, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-five. I'm kind of interested why the, when we get to it, the general fund was eight thousand, seventy-four dollars year-to-date, but Public Works is thirty-one thousand, it should be the same percentage, it's a little off, uh, seventy-eight, forty-nine. Janet, does that include, um, Michelle's firm as well as the annual audit?
We did, no, none of that is in this, because we did not engage DHHM until early March. So we, I don't think we even got bills until after April, maybe in April, we got one small bill.
The budget itself, the thirty-one thousand, the forty thousand, the thirty-one thousand, general fund, utility fund, public works, that is Michelle's firm and the auditing firm?
It's the original budget for those, but, uh, we had discussed the fact that, um, there was going to be additional charges when it came to doing the twenty-twenty-four and changing everything over at the beginning of the year. So those expenses have all been paid. Once we are able to, to work on the budget amendment, we'll be able to see what the cost of that was and adjust that budget based upon.
Remember those big expenses paid after April?
Yeah.
Okay.
When do we think that budget amendment list will be available?
Um, in the finance chairman's update that I sent out, I had said that the goal would be for us to have something to give to you at the second meeting in July, so that then it can start going through the process in August and, and be approved in August.
Okay, on, on garbage, total expenditures that are on line seventy of a hundred-and-thirty thousand is right on target at thirty-two point eighty-eight percent. In water, your water sal, salaries and related benefits, which is right under line seventy-four, is at thirty percent. And then your water operating expenses at nine thousand, just under ten thousand, is at five point two-two percent. So your total water operating on line seventy-eight is at nineteen percent. And then for sewer, your sewer auto repairs and maintenance, which is right below line eighty-one at fifteen thousand, the right before that, the equipment repair and maintenance on line eighty-one is at eighty-eight percent. Um, this was servicing a town generator for the storms, and also to repair a vacuum truck. So that's why that's a little bit higher than, um, the thirty-three percent. And on line seventy-nine, the auto and equipment fuel, that's higher because there was large purchases of fuel in April to, just for the hurricane storm season coming up.
All right.
The sewer salaries and related benefits, which is right below line eighty-five, is at thirty percent. And then your total sewer operating expenses, which is right below line eighty-nine at seventy-one thousand, is at twenty-one percent. So your total sewer operating expenses on line ninety is a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, or twenty-six percent of budget. So just kinda taking a look at each different service between the revenues and our expenditures, you're still trending okay. So if you notice, your gas revenues were three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, with expenses of two-hundred-and-eighty. Your water revenues were a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand as of April, with total water expenditures of eighty-one thousand. And then your sewer revenues as of the end of April were two-hundred-and-one, with your expenditures being a hundred-and-fifty-eight. And then lastly, the garbage revenues as of through April is a hundred-and-forty-two, with your total expenditures of a hundred-and-thirty. So each department is still kinda holding its own. And then at the end of the day, if you turn to the last page, if you look at line one oh eight, that is your net revenue of eighty-seven hundred dollars.
And those figures from, um, sewer and water, even though they're low, that's without the rate increase, and they're still pretty profitable?
Correct. All right, public works. So total revenues on Public Works is on line nine at three-hundred-and-seventy thousand, and that's pretty much on target of thirty-three percent. And really, the only line item that you have not received any income on is the state mowing income, and that's probably gonna start coming in with some of the warmer months with grass cutting.
I think it came in August last year.
And then on your expenditure side, line fourteen, your total public work salaries and benefits is at thirty-three percent. Line seventeen, your total lighting expenses are at thirty-five percent, with, um, the one that's over that is the lighting operating expenses, and I think that's, we talked about, that's the accessory is in there, which kinda pushed that over. Also, if you look on line twenty-four, is your auto repair and maintenance, that's a little bit higher than that thirty-three percent. I think we talked about that last month, you just have some older cars with some maintenance and repairs that occurred in the prior month. And then if you look on line twenty-five, that's the barn shop repair and maintenance, it's at forty-two percent. So that, you did have, um, some battery on a gate that had to be repaired, and some, um, janitorial supplies are included in that. And then on line twenty-seven, your auto fuel, that's at thirty-seven percent, and that's also purchasing some fuel in April just for the upcoming storm seasons. Also, an item of note, I think we've talked about this, a dumpster that keeps getting, on line forty, that's, that's, um, higher. So that will have to be a budget amendment.
I'm sorry, what, which line was that?
Forty, line forty, the dumpster garbage disposal, that's where they added that additional dumpster.
All right, and how long, I had written this down, how long is that second dumpster gonna be needed?
It, it, it's a permanent, we have, don't have an, any plan on, it's not really considered temporary.
All right, that's the one in the park?
Yes.
All right, don't we have an ordinance that says that we need to have fences around dumpsters for commercial use? Is that an ordinance, mayor? Like the junior food store and things, they have a, they have to have a fence around it? Do we need to put a fence around this dumpster for the park, just so we're in the same? In the schools?
No, it's not, it is now, so I'll, I'll go again, so anyway...
It's gotta be on the slab, water faucet.
Slab, water faucet, fence around it, and if we could put both of them together, then, you know, when we're not using it, it would give the school extra space and vice versa, like in the summer, so that's the plan. And we'll recycle.
I have a question on thirty, on line thirty-three. Are our insurance fees going up? Are we getting charged more for insurance?
In some cases, yes.
Yeah, I think that...
I mean, that, that's all property insurance, that's related to other, the, 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 the property insurance on our, um, barn, our maintenance barn, our sewer plant, things like that.
How can it not go up?
And that just renewed, that renews, those policies renew in May. So what you're seeing there is the old policy, the new policy renewed in May, and so new amounts come out.
Okay.
Do we expect any amendments, budget amendments, based on changes in insurance?
It's a possibility, yes, I think we're gonna, um, I, I, I think that what you'll see is that a lot happened in May that kind of changes the stance of things, and so I, when we're gonna, all the information has been submitted from May, hoping that we'll have May when we do the budget amendment at the same time. That way you have a very clear picture, because a lot of these grants happened in May, the changes in utility fund happened in May. So, yes, if the amount looks like it's going to be over, and we have it, kind of, the schedule laid out for the year to know exactly what the costs are gonna be, then yes, we will do a budget amendment.
Okay, so property insurance, um, is expected to increase, right, from the previous policy?
I, I don't know the answer to whether or not it's gonna go over budget or not, I haven't looked at that since, um...
Okay.
Well, I thought you said it was paid in May.
It is pa, well, it, uh, there's a deposit that's paid in May, it's renewed in May. So there's a deposit that's paid in May, but I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head whether or not this amount is gonna go over, I would probably suggest that it probably will.
It's insurance, they raise it when the wind blows, it just, you know.
And I do have to say that LeAnn and Donette spent a lot of time sitting down with the insurance providers to discuss what the coverages were and the deductibles, and to determine whether or not our coverages were accurate before the renewal happened.
Right.
On the second page of Public Works, just to also point out on line forty-five, that two-hundred-and-seventy-four percent of budget, that was also the Tyler Tech expenses. So your total Public Works operating expenses on line forty-seven is fifty, fifty-nine thousand, or forty-two percent. Also, if you notice on line forty-eight, is the capital outlay level Bervant project, uh, some of that is gonna, uh, some expenses have started coming in, but really won't really have a lot until sometime maybe in August. So overall, the total Public Works expenses for the fund is on line fifty-one of a hundred-and-eighty thousand, or sixteen percent. On recreation, so you look on line ten, is your total operating revenue of eighty-eight percent, or forty-nine percent, eighty-eight thousand, I'm sorry, eighty-eight thousand, or forty-nine percent. Your museum income, a couple items to point out, your museum, museum income on line two is at thirty-six percent. The farmer's market is, is lagging, you know, overall, it's been lagging since the beginning of the year, that really had to do with a lot of the farmer's markets at the beginning of the year that got canceled. May have to look to see, maybe in the fall, this may pick up, but may have to take a double look at that overall budget.
Maybe that's why we got the gold award, we're too cheap.
The gumbo cook-off on line six is completely done, so total income on that was eighty-seven hundred. And you also had the Busker Fest income of forty-eight hundred that was not budgeted.
That fifteen thousand that was budgeted, it was originally budgeted as other income, and both gumbo cook-off and Busker Fest were included in that fifteen thousand. So that was what the projection was for both of those.
That's on line nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, lines, line six and seven were budgeted at fifteen thousand together.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay. And then if you'll notice, on line twelve is your grant income, you received seventy-five thousand, and that was for payment for the museum deck. So overall, total revenues on line fourteen is a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, or just below fifty percent.
But that deck is finished now?
It is, we have not received all of the funds, I think there's one more draw left to come from the state. And I think there's actually a draw that came in after this, in May, May or June. So there was one that's not reported on this financial report, and then there's another one that hasn't been even, um, sent yet.
But we can still say it's a hundred percent.
The work is a hundred percent done.
It had to be by June something.
Right, the work and I think the expenses are a hundred percent through June.
Then your total park and rec salaries and benefits, which is right below line eighteen, is at thirty-one percent. You know, you're on line nineteen, your operating expenses at fifty, forty-two percent, um, that was pretty much front-end loaded with those checks and deposit books, that was paid at the beginning of the year. Then on line thirty-five is your farmer's market expenditures, which is at thirty-four percent. Your total other expenditures on line forty-four of eighty-one hundred is at twenty-four percent. On line forty-six, that capital outlay, that's the museum deck, so your total is a hundred-and-two thousand, or sixty-eight percent. So your total park and rec expenditures on line forty-eight is a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. On your cemetery, not much changes here. You know, your plot sales and your interest income, total revenues on line three are eighty-eight hundred. Your total expenditures on line ten is at sixty-three hundred. So your total net income is about twenty-five hundred for this fund. And then lastly, on your debt service, most of your revenues have been collected on line three, you'll notice it's ninety, ninety-five, only it's ninety-six percent collected, which is your avalorum. You're all gonna continually receive interest income, but most of the revenue has been collected through avalorum. And on your debt service expenditures, your principal payments, that's all done at a hundred percent. And on your debt service expenditures, your principal payments, that's all done at a hundred percent. And your interest expense, you have one more payment of interest, and then this will be done. Any questions? There's only one other thing I did want to bring to you guys' attention, on the utilities fund. I know we always kind of go over the budget to actual, but on the balance sheet, just to bring this to you guys' attention, the construction in progress. So that's included on your asset side. So you guys have a project that's ongoing, and you got so far, one point two million dollars in that, in that project. And that's for the wastewater treatment project. So back in 2024, you had incurred about seven hundred thousand. This year so far, you've incurred about a half a million of expenditures towards that wastewater treatment plant. So that's where that's reflected, those expenditures of the construction in progress for that wastewater treatment plant. Any questions on anything I went over?
No, Michelle, thank you very much.
Looks like we're kind of on track for most things, most items.
Yes.
Except for the budget amendment, which will be coming in August, and that's when we're really going to see where we're off.
Yes, I think that kind of will tweak things for y'all a little bit.
Just as we discussed outside, if we could just somehow indicate those things that are now at a hundred percent.
Okay, and that made clear up with the budget, because I think with the budget amendment, you know, there may be a, you can change the budget to reach that hundred percent, so then that will be reflected in those percentages.
Maybe not parentheses, but brackets, or color code, something that we know that-
Our star.
Yeah, star, star would be great, or a little asterisk, that's a hundred percent complete, done.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Okay, going to reports from the Chairman, Alderman Boudreaux, you want to start with you?
Okay, um, thank you, Donette, for filling me in on most of this stuff. We have, they have ninety-four work orders listed this, this time for overall subjects. I, I do think that we're a little bit behind on our street repair, I don't know how we're going to get that up, but I know those guys are really busy, but we might want to focus on that a little bit. That's probably my second focus. Okay, the water storage tank, y'all heard about that at the last meeting, I think we all, it was all cleaned up, and we got a good water review from the thing, good job on that one. The wastewater treatment plant, excuse me. That's supposedly on schedule, looks like they're going to be finished around this time next year. Depends on a lot of things, hurricanes, weather, you know, there's been a lot of things, but it'll, it'd be around this time next year. I just wonder, since we're hooked up to the Arrowood now, is there any consideration given to the meadows, or what we might do to hook them up? How do they fit into our plans with the, with the sewer? Is there any considerations given to that, Mayor?
That would actually be an engineering question, that we, you know, we'd have to have the engineers talk about what their solution is for that. You know, we're trying to work on all of our sewer lines, we're working on, you know, we've got the connection to Arrowood, they're building the plant, and we're looking at maybe a Keller Street lift station or something like that, that's going to help alleviate some of the, some of the sewer from all over that, that whole area of, of the town. You know, we still have the same lines that are running from point A to point B, that are smaller than the ones that we have, that, that are feeding it, and therefore, you know, you know, we're, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do everything we can.
Yeah, I was just wondering, since we had upgraded the lift stations and whatnot, and, you know, if there was any time, anything going on with the engineers about that.
Well, the lift stations have been all redone. And I think Pearl Street, Pearl Street's been completed, and, and, you know, it, it's, it's ready.
It's working good, it doesn't stink anymore.
There you go, you see that, that's a plus.
The, the small pipes where we have restrictions right now for building, what's the plan for those areas? EJ?
What's that?
The areas where we have restrictions right now, where they can't build or can't connect a city sewer?
Right.
What's the plans for correcting those issues?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything on that. I wish we could go ahead and, I know the Long Branch is on a temporary thing, I would like to get them hooked up, so that might be a priority right there, on that side. So, we're going to start having people that have a big enough property, they're going to want to use sewage, I mean-
Septic systems.
Septic tanks.
Yeah, septic.
And, of course, we're going to lose revenue from that, because we won't get any sewer revenue, but-
We have-
See what the engineers come up with.
We, we have, there, there's something we're working on, Donette, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, where we allow these places like the rehab center, and, you know, and then when we get that fixed, which would actually be all of our, you know, we all have the same goal as far as that, then they're able to stay with their, their, their in-house septic system for a period of time, and then they move over two hours and hook up. You know, we, we could do that with, you know, other places, other homes as well, if it's in, in that area, you know?
Yep, well, just a question. Okay, Level Bervant, we got two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in this budget to finish that project, I hope. And it says here that you've been working with the engineers and everybody, and the consultants and whatnot to-
Yeah, I just-
Get that finished, so.
I just read something from Kyle and, Kyle and Associates, where they said that they're gonna, that the asphalt company has agreed to come out and, and make the repairs in the areas that we've had, we've designated as issues. There were a couple that they didn't, excuse me, agree with, but they're going to come out and, and, and work those issues, and then after that, then the other company, Talbot Construction, will come in and make the kind of repairs and the things that they need to as well, which would include, you know, all the gardens done correctly, the way it's supposed to be, and that kind of stuff, so.
We expect Donahoe, the asphalting company, to be out within the next three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
And to do the, they're, they're going to have to actually re, what do you call it, mill? And overlay certain areas, and some areas they're going to make repairs. So they expect, Kyle expects that all repairs and all punchless items will be done by the end of August.
Yeah, they're going to have to put, move along for that, so I guess the, I guess what the people need to know is you're going to have a little inconvenience there.
Yes, as soon as we find out exactly when they're going to be out there, we'll make sure that we put out there any road closures that are going to happen.
They're supposed to let us know when they mobilize back to this area, so.
Okay.
One question regarding Level Bervant, the two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars that's in the 2025 budget, how much of that have we been invoiced for, that we haven't paid because they haven't completed the project? Or, and is there, do we anticipate additional expenses beyond the two sixty-nine?
This is the, the remainder of what we, is owed on that project. We got a pay app that we had been holding since January for sixty-seven thousand, which was for work that was already performed. We released that payment this week, the remainder of that is being held until all pi-
The remainder of what?
The two sixty-nine, so.
So the two sixty-nine minus the what?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven was paid off this week?
Yes.
So we have another two hundred thousand, basically, that we're holding until they complete, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so under equipment needs for the, for the maintenance people, there's nothing specific here, but I was wondering, when we had that eighty-eight thousand in there for repairs, I, I didn't know if we needed something to be replaced or what it was, but if you repaired those, those two pieces of equipment, I guess, I don't know, there's a few other things they want, but maybe we can get them something along the ways. I, I know they want something to cut the streets with, but. And the town's still looking for experienced digger, excavator operator, so we'll take a look at that. They probably shorthanded over there. Several sidewalk repairs are needed on Level and Main, so they'll be working on that. Understand Mayor has some bids out to fix that, so that'll, we'll, we'll see how that comes out. And bids on the infrastructure system, I hope that's the sewer's priority, I hope that's my, that's my priority.
Sure.
Because we, we got to be able to get everybody on that sewer, so otherwise it's going to be starting to affect our property values, when people can't, why build a, why buy a lot if you can't build a house, you know? So that's a big problem, so that seems to be a priority for me. Anyway, I think that's about it, that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Boudreaux, Contors, Alderman Contors, you're up.
Okay, we have some important planning items to mention tonight. As you know, we've been working with Desireline, our planning consultants, on comprehensive rezoning process. We've had some special meetings, on May twenty-ninth, we had a meeting to talk about the commercial districts and commercial zoning categories, and then on June twenty-sixth, we had another one that was about land use design standards. If you missed those, there's sort of a synopsis of those on our website. But the next thing that is coming up, that we really want folks to come out and participate in, is a community meeting Q and A session on July eighteenth, that's a Friday, and it's kind of open house from twelve to four, but instead of just being sort of a walk-around, and there will still be maps and all of that information available, but you could also come and sit and have a one-on-one session with a planner, or Kristin, a member of the planning staff, if you have specific questions about the zoning of your property, or certain properties in town that you want to have a, a more in-depth conversation about. And if for some reason you can't make that date, Kristin said she will be available, you can make an appointment to meet with her personally at Town Hall, if you want to, you know, come in and talk about your property, so you don't have to come in and talk about it in a public session. It really can be a one-on-one, and really what we're trying to do is get the zoning right. We want as much input as possible, and, and we can only do as well as what we hear from the citizens. So we really encourage you to come out to that meeting on July eighteenth, or if you can't make that date, just call Town Hall, speak to Kristin, email her, you can come in and, you know, kind of make your voice heard. So those are the main things in planning, and we are expecting to have a, oops, let me get this right. That's July eighteenth, and then July thirty-first, there will be a planning and zoning meeting in the regular planning and zoning session, where they will discuss all the feedback that they've gotten from all the different open houses that we have previously held, and they'll have a clear copy of the ordinance that they've been doing draft changes on as they get more feedback. So they'll have, you know, the full, clear document, if you want to read through the new zoning codes. And they're hoping for August twenty-eighth, a discussion and possible vote at the council level. Now, that's a desired date, but if it turns out that we find out after meeting with folks that we didn't get enough input, or people need more time, we're flexible as to moving that back a little bit. So that's a projected date for August twenty-eighth, to have our, at least a discussion, if not a vote, on the new zoning codes at the council. All right, so mark July eighteenth on your, on your calendars, and please come out and participate. It's the future of the town and how you want to see it used, and every voice counts. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Alderman Sossi, Finance.
Finance, obviously you guys are up to speed where we are year-to-date, with the April's figures being shown tonight, we should have May by, in two weeks from tonight. One good thing that's happening now that wasn't happening before is that scanning and archiving paid invoices are being done, so they'll be electronically stored somewhere. Hopefully we have a backup system in place as well. The monthly financial reports are a great help, obviously that has resumed, and again, we should have May in two weeks at the July fifteenth meeting, Fargo as well. Any questions? Jen, the only thing I ask for, we probably need about six months of data, which hopefully we'll be getting at least May in two weeks, and if we could add some columns, when we go to do the budget, I should have brought this up to Michelle's attention as well, but the 2024 budget, or maybe the 2024 actuals, that we can have a comparison of where we are year-to-date, 2024 versus 2025. The problem is, is that it's such a different format, I can't, I'd have to retype everything, can't just copy and paste it anymore like we used to be able to do, and convert it over to Word and Excel and paste it, that's no longer an option. So maybe if we could just add a column to show how we ended in 2024 versus where we are after six months of 2025, we can adjust the budget for next year.
I will let them know, I agree, I can do media just like we do. So I'll let them know that, what your request is.
Hopefully we can start working on the budget within the next few weeks, and have something submitted in October.
I think overall is going to be minor changes, I think that what you're going to see is that the overall bottom line on each fund is going to probably be very, very little change, but it's going to be mostly just on the line item level, just kind of honing in on some of these things that maybe were different than what we expected.
That's all.
So have anybody, any of y'all heard from the legislative auditor on the results of the audit? They were supposed to have that yesterday.
It was submitted, it was submitted by the auditor to the legislative auditor, and then the legislative auditor, they review it, and once they release it, then it becomes a public record. Michelle and I emailed with-
I see it was submitted yesterday.
It was submitted, the due date was the thirtieth, and so Griffin and Furman submitted it to the legislative auditor yesterday, and it usually takes them a little while, because of the due date, they have so many to review.
It's government.
Yeah, then they'll post it on their website, and then as soon as they do that, we'll have the final draft, and we'll be able to give you, I don't have a final draft, so, once we get a final draft, then we can forward it to you.
Okay.
But the results have not changed from what you were presented with the draft.
Yeah.
As far as the findings and the financials.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Alderman Pumpley.
All right, so for Health and Community Services, under Community Services, the subject of individual on-site sewer disposal systems, or iOSDS. On Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of June, we sent out reminder notices to homes that have not responded to our initial request for inspections on their individual systems. We will continue to follow up to ensure that all homes comply with the town's ordinance requiring the inspection of the units. This is really important, because it's been proven that ditches that, that receive improperly treated sewage have a higher potential of breeding mosquitoes and West Nile virus, which, as you know, we had a case here. So residents with individual systems should not wait for the town to notify them to check their discharge for proper system operation, because that's an impact to the health of everyone here. Under Law Enforcement, for the month of June, according to the information from the, from the town clerk, there were twenty total citations issued in June, eight were for speeding, seven were for stop sign violations, and the remainder were for other types of violations. Other notes, as far as human resources go, the mayor has approved a new take-home vehicular policy for the town employees that will include mileage logs in accordance with the auditor's request. The policy became effective as of today, July first. And next month's priorities, we'll continue to, to monitor the backflow certification for all required locations of, on the town's water system. As mentioned above, reminder notices have been mailed to homes in Zones One, Two, and Three. to homes in Zones 1, 2, and 3, uh, for those individual sewer inspection requests. And we plan to have notices go out to homes in Zone 5, which is 41 homes, by the end of the month of July. That's it.
Can I ask a quick question about the, um, policy for a vehicle?
Sure.
Take-home policy for vehicle? How many vehicles do we have that would be used in that manner?
It just depends. Each of our vehicles get taken home at some point. All of our employees who drive vehicles have signed take-home policy, um, agreements in case they have to take it home when they are on call. Some take them home more often. Those that respond more often take them home more often. But all of the employees who drive a vehicle have signed it. And they all will have to track any mileage that they use outside of their regular workday. So if they're driving to and from work, they'll be recording that. And we'll be, um, recording that through their, um, their tax forms going forward as a, as a benefit.
So we're paying for people to drive to and from work? Uh, I'm just trying to understand what they mean.
No, no, no. They will be having taxes withheld on that benefit. So if they choose not to take it home, then it would stay here. They would drive their own vehicle. If they take it home, they have to track any mileage that they drive between work and their house. So that then we have to record that as a fringe benefit on their taxes, on their tax forms.
So they get a 1099.
Well, it goes on their W-2.
W-2, yeah.
It'll be recorded on their W-2s.
The ones that take them home all the time are the, excuse me, are the three that are gas certified. Because if we have a gas leak, you know, there's-
Sure.
There's rules that we have to have X number of certified gas people out on the call.
Well, are they treated differently?
They're not treated differently, no.
I mean, why would, if it's mandatory that they take it home, why are they being?
They're not treated-
It's not mandatory.
It's not mandatory. They don't have to.
Oh, they don't have to?
No, it's just easier for, you know, the situation.
Okay.
And the people that take it home when they're on call, it's, you know, because they're in and out. They, they come in, they do what they have to do on the weekends. They go back, they could get called out, they'd have to come back again and go back home again.
Okay, if they're on call, can they take a vehicle home without being, being for it on their W-2?
They still have to, they still have to.
It's a requirement that everyone, including the mayor, has to track mileage now going forward. And it, it gets recorded.
Yeah, no, uh, it's always been a policy with the feds to track, or IRS to track mileage. But I didn't know if there were some exceptions that we had here.
No, we worked with DHHM and with Griffin and Furman to determine what the policy should be and how it should be tracked. And, um, Danette worked on the policy. We went over it with the department heads and, and that became effective today. And so we're going to track through July. And then August 1st will be the first paycheck that we'll record that on for them. And that will be it going forward.
Okay, so let's, uh, moving on now to Marshall's report. Marshall Bonet.
All right, this report runs from 5/19/2025 to 6/29/2025. And just to try to eliminate any confusion, the, the stats that Alderman, Tompley mentioned were just for this past month. But these dates are different. So, so this runs from the last time that I brought stats to y'all till now. So it's gonna be a little higher. That's why it's different. The numbers he gave are included in this, okay? So there was one arrest. That arrest occurred on a traffic stop. Person was found to be wanted. There were, I have seven, but there's probably been more assists of, of outside agencies. Uh, no summons. There were five traffic accidents that we handled. Uh, there were 104 traffic stops that were done. There were 38 citations issued. No juvenile cases, no school incidents, and no warrants issued. Uh, there was a rot, a report of a rottweiler running loose on St. Charles Avenue. We've actually had a couple of reports with this same dog. The dog is the most friendly dog you ever wanna meet. But is, if you're not familiar with dogs, or if you're, you know, a small person, it could be very intimidating. And it actually knocked the lady over by accident, just trying to, just trying to play. So, I mean, it was, you know, an obvious safety issue. And of course, there's an ordinance, you're supposed to be on a leash or within a fence. So, uh, Captain Mike and I picked the dog up, brought it to Animal Control, and it kind of got things going. And it, what hap, what that triggers is, if I'm not mistaken, they'll put a chip in the dog, make sure it's up on its shots. And if the person wants the dog back, it's raining. Condensation. Uh, if the person wants the dog back, they have to pay Animal Control for those services. And so, um, I think there was one more time since then that the, the dog had been seen out. We've been making periodic checks and we haven't seen it. Because if we see it, we'll pick it up. There was a report, let's see, that incident was on, uh, 6/3 of 2025. On 6/6/25, there was a report of a theft of a trash can on Golden Street. Also on the same day, there was an incident that happened right out of, outside the city limits. And this is one of those calls where somebody assisted, uh, with a medical car. There was an infant. Don't know what happened. The sheriff's office handled it. But what I do know is, is that, uh, one of our guys, Kevin, Kevin Brown, responded since he was close because the mother was doing CPR on the infant. So as soon as he got there, he immediately took over and did CPR and brought the baby out to the ambulance. I don't know the outcome of that. So he should be commended for that. That was a, a really tough situation to walk into. And there was a, an, a tragic incident at the trailhead. There was a suicide involving a youngster. So on that note, I, I wanna point out and encourage people to go to, St. Tammany's Outreach for the Prevention of Suicide, stops.com. Their website is S T O P S dot dash L A dot com. S T P, I'm sorry, let me slow down. S T O P S dash L A dot com. There's a lot of information on that website in terms of recognizing, you know, someone that may be having some problems and needs some help. Could save a life. I mean, uh, there's a couple of things that, it's been a while since I looked at the site, but, uh, there was a couple of things that piqued my interest when I looked at it earlier today. That's about it. The sheriff's office handled that incident at the trailhead.
Marshall, um, the new law enforcement books haven't come out yet. There were some changes. And the reason I bring this up, I got a few phone calls from citizens and they just went to mayor's court this last week or week before, regarding texting and driving. And both their cases were thrown out. They were issued, uh, summons by our, our department. And they were both dismissed by the judge. I don't know who the judge was in mayor's court. Prosecutor, who was that? Brian Traynor. Some things have changed with the laws with texting. What's a, what's going on?
Yes, from what I understand, it's, it's a little more strict now in that all you have to be doing is holding the device in your hand while you're driving. And it's a violation.
Okay. That's it signed by the governor?
It's been, as I understand it, it's been signed by the governor, but it doesn't take effect until August 1st, like most.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
I was wondering, uh, every now and again, there's a discussion about whether people on, I mean, golf carts and private, well, they're okay. I was wondering if either we're giving out a citation and anybody would like to reply?
I have not. There's, there's- His, his question was, was in reference to golf carts. If we've ever issued a citation or taken action against anyone for driving reckless or dangerous on golf carts, right? All right, so, no, I personally have not written any citations. But there's been multiple times where, you know, we either observed something or somebody reported something to us that was hazardous. And we went and, and located the youngsters and called the parents to come get them and come get the golf cart. And of course, educate them on the, you know, the obvious dangers involved in that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think your question was up.
Nope, that's, that's it. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Marshall. Um, moving into, uh, new business now, uh, discussion of garbage rates. That's gonna be, um, Danette, you're gonna-
So I just, um, prepared some information for-
Yeah, pull the mic closer.
I do. So I just prepared some, some information for y'all to review. As you know, Coastal came in, did a great presentation, but they are going up on their rates. So what I've reminded everyone here is that Coastal is doing a lot of services for us. They pick up once a week residential, once a week recycling, and they also do bulk once a month. Their current charge is 2605 a month. That is the charge that they charge per pickup to the town. They are now going up to 2670 a month charging to the town. So the last rate increase that the town did on the rates that we charged to our customers was in January of 2023. So, uh, the discussion tonight is to whether or not we're gonna consider, or if anyone even wants to consider, uh, going up on the rates that we charge the customers.
The town has received increases from Coastal every year around July of about 3%. But we've absorbed those costs up until now. And now we're kind of at the point where that profit margin is, is kind of gong away. I don't wanna say profit margin, the fees that we collect that are then used to pay the administrative expenses for it. So the difference between what we charge and what we pay them is getting very slim.
So we have options, uh, prepared options for y'all to review. These are certainly not, um, set in stone. That is your job, not mine. But the first option, of course, is to stay charging our customers what we are currently charging them per month, which is 2670. The town would then absorb that increase, which causes a deficit of 11 cents per pickup. We could match Coastal's increase of 2.9% on the monthly rate. That would bring the rate up to 2748. That would literally just be passing the increase over to the residents. The third option is just a partial increase. If the town and the residents just come together and we come up with a rate somewhere around $27. So when I prepared this chart, again, you can see under the option, you have each of those three options, no charge, match, and partial increase. I calculated the parts, partial increase to be 2718. And the reason I use that number is it because it keeps our budgetary values the same as they were approved. So the top chart is monthly. You can see the deficit that would occur if we keep the rate at its current value, then-
2670?
Yes, sir, 2670 a month. Uh, the bottom chart is the annual. So it's the same as the top, it's just showing you the annual. So overall, at the end of the year, if we don't do anything and leave the rate at 2670, the town's gonna be taking on a deficit of over $1,600. Uh, match increase would certainly produce more revenue for the town. The partial increase, like I said, was calculated to keep our current budget values in line. You can go on to the next slide. So residential impact. If we do no char, change, of course, no resident is gonna experience any change. If you go up to a match, that's gonna increase the residence bill by 78 cents a month or $9.36 a year. If we do a partial increase, um, then that will increase the residence bill 48 cents a month or $5.76 annually. So again, this, this information is just presented to y'all for your review and for your discussion. Uh, nothing is happening tonight. We're just giving you the options. We're letting you know what's out there. Any change to the current rate will require a resolution approved by the Board of Aldermen.
Is that on the website, Danette?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My question is, um, what do we feel that we wanna do? Do we, uh, do we wanna aim to do an increase each year? Or we're gonna do it like this, like every two years? What, what do y'all think is far as-
We haven't done one since 2003, 23, correct?
23, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So this would be a, a two-year window?
Two years at-
At the same rate.
80 cents a month?
Yeah, I feel like we, we do a lot to try to hold down the costs. Uh, we didn't roll forward with the mileage, um, until we'll have to in 2027, I believe.
Correct.
Um, but I don't think that we should just supplement basic services that are required. And especially when it's a cost of, you know, less than a dollar a month. You know, it costs $5 for a cup of coffee now, you know? Um, I think that we cannot, um, we can't start making more holes in the bucket, you know, for the town. And it's, it's not an ex, it's not an exorbitant expense. So if you wanna do it every other year, I think that's fine. But we shouldn't get into the position of, you know, be, planning for a deficit, um, for basic services. I don't think that is good, sound judgment.
Yeah, go to the mic, please, sir.
Green lights on. Yeah, I'm Bill, training George Oliver on St. Joseph's Street. Um, what, what is the buffer and how much is it? I mean, what, what is the reason we have a buffer and how much is in the buffer?
Are you referring to the, the budgetary? Uh, we're talking about the budgetary figures when we presented the budget for approval through Alderman. There's a difference between our revenue and our expenditures, yes, sir. And that's how I kinda- Yes, sir. Yes.
So based on how much, you know, percentage, does it vary?
I was not in the budgetary process, so I'm not sure where that came from. But I use those numbers that were approved by the Alderman.
So the, the budgets set based upon projected actual revenue and actual expenses. The difference between those two numbers is the rate. And those, and so the, what we charge customers is higher than what we pay Coastal. And that's because there are administrative and other expenses related to that. So the difference between that is less than $2 a, i- it's less than $2 a, a, a customer.
Thank you, Janet.
Same as I mentioned earlier, insurance was just paid in May. Coastal's gonna present this to the town in, uh, this month of a rate increase. But we do the budget in December of the prior year, anticipating that it's gonna be increases. Insurance, garbage, price of gas.
Yeah, I, I wanted to comment that it looks like the numbers are so small, that the cost of actually having an ordinance to change them, uh, may be relevant. And for that reason, you might wanna do it, you know, not every year because just the cost of, of publishing and, and going, going to having the ordinance recorded.
It's a resolution. So it doesn't require that kind of newspaper advertisement because it's set by resolution.
It's a resolution then?
Yes. I, I think it's, it's important that maybe the discussion starts happening every year, probably before July, before we get the notification, expecting that it's probably gonna be around 3%. But does that mean that the price has to go up? But does that mean that the price has to go up every year? I think it's going to be dependent on the year.
That, I just think that you need to be mindful that, you know, that you don't want to get too far behind in terms of what you're charging versus the customers versus what Coastal is charging you, you know, that I think it's an easier bump for people to make when those changes happen and they're smaller, you know? For instance, what happened with the water and sewage rates, you know, that we don't want to get behind the curve very much, you know? So, I think smaller bumps are better more often than waiting and thinking that you're doing people a favor, but I think it's better if you stay fairly in line with what your costs are and not, not waiting and subsidizing, you know, that I, because at some point, you're going to have to make, raise those rates, and the rates will be larger, which will have more of an impact. So, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Sandra. It's like, you got to keep up, you know? And I don't think it would hurt anybody to go up that little bit.
So, are you feeling as though passing along the percentage of increase would be the fairest way to do that? If so, then they can prepare a resolution that says that for y'all's discussion and passage.
I, I support a resolution for the nine dollars for the seventy-five cents a month increase.
So, that's a yearly thing of...
Yeah, that's a year.
It's nine dollars a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the two-point-nine percent increase that we received from, from Coastal, so we would add two-point-nine percent to our current rates to keep up with that two-point-nine percent that we received.
Correct.
Okay.
I support it.
Yeah, so it'll come to the next meeting for actual discuss, discussion and passage.
That's about as reasonable as you can get.
Yeah.
So, general consensus is we bring a resolution to you for the raising the rates to twenty-seven forty-eight a month.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that's the end of the new business, and there is no old business, so that leaves us to the open sections. Stuart, you going? Oh, well, never mind.
Would anybody mind if I went first?
What's that?
Would anybody mind if I went first?
Wait, what now?
Y'all, everybody get, everybody get their chance. I'm going to go first real quick. As, as many of you know, my family had an emergency this past week when my son had run away from home, and I wanted to say thank you to so many different people who helped in the town, not only the administration, but fire chief, I mean, lots of people either helped to get the information out really quickly, or were actually out there, or both, you know? Some people did both, helped to get the information out, and some people actually came out there and were helping us look, and we were looking all night, and we did finally find him, and it was really great to see such support. This, just the town's post was reshared on Facebook like fifteen-hundred times. So, that was really, really helpful and encouraging. I wanted to say thank you to the community. Thank you to the St. Tammany Parish Sheriff's Office, who were fantastic, great help, couldn't have done it without them, and the dog that they brought out there. So, I just wanted to say that that was really one of the beautiful things about living in Abida, is how the community came together and helped, helped us when we really needed it. So, just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Thank, thank God he was found unharmed and everything is fine. And Mayor, I did bring up, I saw Brandon Stein's post, Chief Stein's post, a few days after your child was found, and this would be a great opportunity for us to implement a one-call or something, you know? There was a great outpour of support, and there were so many of us that weren't even aware of the situation, and I think, Brandon, you said you met, saw Tyler Tech guy, and he said something possibly we could incorporate into our technology down the road to be able to, you know, we have to do a board advisory, or it was a lost child. Be nice to be able to send out a text message to citizens or email something, phone calls with a verbal message. We use one call at the coroner's office, and you could do either text or verbal and send it out, and you can actually, we had it where we could send it to three different phone numbers for the same person. So, the technology's there.
The big problem that we have right now is you'd be surprised how many people come in and give us a number. Like, me personally, if somebody in there was to ask me what my phone number was to do something with my bill, I would say eight-nine-three-nine-one-four-one. Well, that is my number, but there's no phone hook to it, there's no ring, there's no nothing. That's an old landline that I just, I give out to everybody, so...
Why are you not answering when I call?
Oh, there you go. I mean, I have a cell phone, and I mean, I figured, you know, but you'd be surprised how many people, we have numbers, and, and you, you call the number, oh, look, this is... Right. This, this is Mary Sue, and here's her number, and you call, and it's, I'm sorry, this number's been disconnected for the last twenty-five years, you know, and you're going, holy mackerel. So...
Right, well, maybe we'll have an affidavit sign that your number's accurate and...
Well, that's what we need to do. I think we need to make sure that the numbers are actually accurate. Not that we really want to get up in your business, but you're right, so that we can do that kind of stuff, and the response would be much, much faster. So, I do, I do agree, and Tyler Tech does have an app that they...
Don't, don't we already have the Safe Alert? We just have to get residents...
We have an emergency email system.
Right.
Well, we also have a Safe Alert program that citizens can sign up for, residents can sign up for, and it's a whole list of information. Like, if we were to have come into contact with somebody's child who's on the spectrum, it would give us a whole list of like what their interests are, who their contact would be, anything of that nature, but it's, we've promoted it in the journal, we have it on the website. You can call us, we can send you the link for it, but it's out there for us to...
And we have a lot of like older individuals who are signed up for that, so that when we have a storm that's happening, there's been many storms where I've communicated with them through the storm to make sure that they're okay, that if they lose power, if they need anything, but it's more of a one-on-one thing, so if it got to the point where we had a hundred or two-hundred of them, it would be much more difficult. So, I think the new system, once we've completely transitioned, which we've re-initiated that process, I think Tyler Tech will have the ability to do that more effectively.
Ms. Sissy, you're up.
Sissy, we're going to Abida. First, it's just a quick thank you to Sandra, because I attended the Pride Parade in Mandeville, and it was wonderful that Keep Abida Beautiful was there, and I just want to let you know that I called Mayor Madden and the Mand, to say how much I appreciated someone cleaning up after the Pride Parade. He never called me back. But I did...
Check that nine-one-four, check that nine-one-four-one number out.
I did talk to someone on his staff who said she was shocked that anyone called with something nice to say. So, my other thing is, the budget bill that just passed the Senate today is going to severely hurt our people. Poor people in Abida, if this passes the House, are going to lose health insurance, they're going to lose their Medicare, and I am broken-hearted. It's not going to hurt me a lot, I'm nice and middle-class. I've already called Steve Scalise a million times. I'm going to suggest that we all call Peter Egan and Beth Meisel and ask them to put pressure on Steve Scalise. It's not going to help. Because I care about poor people, and this bill is terrible for people, for poor people. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, one question about the, the, the home sewer treatment plants. How many are those, how many of those exist within the town limits?
We have a hundred and forty-eight of those individual onsite.
Within the town limits?
Yes, sir, within the town limits.
Okay, and the unincorporated area is not on the sewer system, right?
No, sir, we cannot regulate the unincorporated area, that would be St. Tammany Parish.
A hundred and forty-eight that are, is it one particular area, or is it like around...
There's not, we don't have sewer to all parts of town, so if you're north of the river, there's no sewer connections there, so those all would be on individual treatment plants.
Oh, everything like north of the river, on fifty-nine, until Shee Pathway?
There's certain areas where there's no, there's no sewer available, because it's never been run.
So, that's the demarcation is the, is the river, then?
Oh, yeah, four-thirty-five, when you cross the river, four-thirty-five, going out to Allen Road and that area, yeah, that, that's all part of it.
Oh, I never realized that.
Right, Dundee.
All right, I'm happy for your family.
There's parts of Dundee that have sewer and parts that do not. When you get down St. Charles and down Dundee, there's no sewer at the end.
I just want to echo something that Ms. Sissy brought up. I'm not speaking for or against the bill, I'm just basically stating what, we had this conversation just prior to me coming to the meeting tonight with a bunch of guys at the station. The ultimate effect of this is not going to affect just the less fortunate. This is going to affect, it has the potential to affect everybody, because hospitals like in Bugalusa, hospitals in the less incorporated areas, they rely a lot on Medicare and Medicaid, and when they lose that business, the only option those hospitals have is to shut down. So, what that's going to do is create an overflow on the hospitals in our areas that are already overtaxed. So, we have ambulances that are sitting on the wall with patients for upwards of an hour in St. Tammany Parish, because the hospital has nowhere to put them. So, when you have an ambulance that's sitting on the wall for over an hour, that's one less ambulance on the road to transport somebody. So, the more we tax the hospitals, the worse it's going to get for everybody. You go to a hospital now, you're sitting in the waiting room for upwards of five to six hours. If you're not dying, you're going to sit in the waiting room, and you're quite possibly going to sit in the waiting room with an IV in your arm, because they'll go that far and put you in a waiting room, in the waiting room. So, look at the big picture here, the potential is there. I'm not saying that's going to happen, the potential is there, and when it does, it's going to be catastrophic, because I don't think they necessarily went that far in depth with it when they started this whole process to actually think about the big picture. I think it was one-sided that backed it all, and they, they're not thinking about the big picture, so don't just think it's going to hurt the less fortunate, it's going to affect us all.
There was a news story this morning, I think it was Channel Six, about the potential closing, closure of some hospitals in Louisiana after this.
Yeah, the list is like over forty hospitals.
Okay.
The list that I seen today is over forty hospitals that would possibly close, being that we only have five in St. Tammany Parish, and they can't keep up. It's not a good idea, so being in the hot, pre-hospital setting and knowing what we go through, it's going to be catastrophic for just this parish, not to mention the rest of the state and the country.
You guys, I would like to take a second to just acknowledge, we work really hard on the Fourth of July every year. This year, we have had a tremendous turnout with helping with donations and sponsorships from different businesses and just community members. In years past, the town has had to supplement a lot of the cost of the festival, and it looks like this year, we will come very close to breaking even, if not making a little bit of money. There have been some really generous donations, quality plumbing, equipment share, we've had, there's so many I can't list at the moment. So, it has been, it's been really nice to see that in a time where, you know, there is a lot of chaos going on, that we really have this to fall back on, and the community does come together and participate and make this such a good event for us. So, thank you to everybody who's helped out. We're still looking for volunteers for the soft drink and water booth, though, if you're available between seven and nine.
I'm really glad to, to see so many people speaking up today. I mean, I don't feel so lonely up here. But I'm, I'm going to change the subject to something entirely different, light pollution. When Abida was in its heyday, you know, in eighteen eighties and nineties, up until World War One, there was no light pollution here, and Abida was a pretty happy town, such as it was. But in nineteen fourteen, we got electric lights, and ever since then, it's been getting worse and worse from the point of view of light pollution. And recently, we have the new lights along the sidewalk that goes out to the ball field, and we've actually had the public complaining. So, what do we do about it? I don't think we're going to shut off all electricity, but one thing that has come up as a possibility that I've seen is the actual color of the light. Now, the color of the light in streetlights and town lighting in general used to be determined by the, the actual technology of, of the light bulbs. So, you had the incandescent, and you had the high-pressure sodium and stuff like that, but now it's LEDs, and LEDs are capable of pretty much total spectrum of color. They, they only come in about three colors, but by combining them, you get a full spectrum. Well, I don't know if you've ever been to one of the bigger zoos, which has a building for nocturnal animals, but if you have, you'll notice that they use a soft red lighting. It turns out that this is, also works for entire towns. Now, not very many of them, but a couple that have rare species of bats living or preserved near the towns have switched to entirely red streetlights, and that's because the red works for bats. And there's other towns along the coast that have switched to red, because sea turtles, when they come ashore, also get confused by white light, but they're not confused because they don't see the red light. But it's true, as I said, in the zoo, it's wildlife in general, and that includes us humans, do much better if we're not subject to, to the blue lights at night. So, what can we do about it, or what can we test about it? We, we could take a look at what some of those towns are doing because of the bats, but we have bats too, by the way. There's bats on Grover Street, and, and all the other wildlife would also appreciate it. We tried out having some red lights, such as on these new lights along the sidewalk. Now, technologically, it could have been done from the start, but I don't know what the, the state of these particular lights is, are, but if they can't actually be changed internally, I have light bulbs where you just get on your phone and change the color of my light bulbs, but these probably don't work that way. But they could get a glaze put on the outside, a red glaze, it couldn't be that complicated or expensive to do, and I think it would solve both the problems that, that residents nearby have been complaining about, and also be helpful to the wildlife if we could go to red lights, and at least try it out for however long it takes to figure out whether it works or not. Thank you.
Anybody else?
There we go. Good afternoon. My name is Frederick Young, born and raised, Bourbon Street, a hundred and twenty seconds from here, depending if the marshal's sitting, it could be a hundred seconds, but say that to say I'm close by. I stand here today, twenty-two months later, not going to give you a backstory, I'm not going to sugarcoat, I'mma do what God put on my heart twenty-two months ago to do, but I was advised not to do so. I'm from Abida Springs, went to Bita Elementary, went to Bita Grammar School. I was the first guy Mayor Dan hired when he came to office, and I love my town. I love Abida Springs, I love the... I love Abida Springs. I love the people in it. I met a lot of great people working here, great people. I betrayed my town. I betrayed the administration. I betrayed my family. And I stand here with my head high, my chest out, asking for forgiveness. A lot of people knew me and a lot of people grew to know me, grew on to me. And I take full responsibility for my, I say that in capital letters, my actions. I'm not going to, I'm not here to be interrogated. I'm here to tell the town of Abida Springs, the administration of Abida Springs, the councilmen, all these people was here when I was here. So it's only through diligence that I tell you guys I apologize. I brought turmoil to the town. I hurt my town. I cannot take it back. But what I will do is ask you guys to remember the person you met before you found out what happened. I gave a lot of sweat and tears to this town, day in, day out. It was my job. But true enough, I went far and beyond for my town. I don't stand here as a pillar of my actions because God gonna, I have faith that through the situation, God have my back. My punishment will be my punishment. My punishment will be whatever is in store for me. I used to weigh 275 pounds when I left here. I weighed 230. Life has been stressful. And I kid you not when I say I have reached out to people. I had to work on myself. I had to fix myself as a husband, as a father, and as an employee. I lost the trust of some people that wholeheartedly probably trust me more than they did their kids. And I took that for granted. I took advantage of it. I can't take it back. All I can do is stand here in front of you guys and say I'm sorry. And I mean that with every fiber in my body. This town is my town. It's tattooed across my back. I've been here 42 years. I went to Rouse's. Mr. Reese was my teacher. I'm from here. I gave my all when I was here. And I say that because I don't want the actions that I cause to outlive who I really am. I don't want to be known as the guy that was entangled with the swipe ordeal. I don't want to be known as that. Yes, it's happened. It's out. I cannot take it back. What I am doing is fixing it. I'm fixing it. And I say this much as in restitution. And even so much as the restitution aspect of it is bigger than that. It's the fact that every day I drive these streets, I can't avoid Abida. I can't avoid people that knew me. I see Ms. Sandra every day. Every day I drive these streets, to work, from work, home. My kids, my kids go to these schools, all of them. I have a high school son that's a star baseball player. He had to endure this through his peers. But what I had to do was find faith, strength to move on. True enough, I put myself in this situation. And I am not one cent, dime bit trying to make excuses. That's absolutely not what I'm here for. I am here so the town of Abida Springs will know when I'm dead and gone, that guy made a mistake, but that was a good guy. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Young, you've been in topical conversation the last few days. I forgive you and I think God forgives you. But I can't authorize God's forgiveness. So keep praying.
Anybody else?
I'd like to know who we owe this depiction of Abida Springs for.
That was me. I drew that, just a little free hand.
Okay.
No, I didn't. Those were, they were here for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, who's that? Ron Berman. It's, they should be signed down at the bottom.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go. Motion, yeah, thank you, Eric. Motion to close. First?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.